Good evening and welcome to the February 1st meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Honorable James Cowie.
Here.
Alderman Grumhaus.
Here.
Alderman Novit.
Here.
Alderman Widman.
Here.
Alderman Gultra.
There.
Alderman Morse.
Here.
Alderman Hanahan.
Here.
Alderman Louie.
Here.
Alderman Palmer.
Here.
Now in present, no absent, Mr. Mayor, we have a forum.
Thank you Beth. You please join me for the Pledge Allegiance.
Our Pledge Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first order of business this evening is reports of city officers and comments by the mayor. Just a brief comment, just to keep the public up to date. Earlier this evening, Bob Kylie, the city manager, myself, Ken Magnus from engineering, and Kathy Cerniak from community service had a phone conversation with some rail consultants regarding the Telegraph Road stop and the possibility of trying to secure a future Amtrak stop there for the Hyo Office service. And it was going to be on the agenda this evening, although given the fact that we were not able to really clarify the exact scope of work and the dollars associated with such at this time, we're going to table that for right now. But I do want to let the public know that we are continually working on this. This is something that, I can tell you one thing, we are all here learning an awful lot. There are an awful lot of agencies involved. There's an awful lot of pieces to this puzzle. And we certainly do need some type of guidance from a third party because this is certainly issues that are well beyond our knowledge. So we will continue to work with the consultant to see if we can get, one, the scope of work narrowed down and the monies that he's asked for allocated to those scopes more in tune with our budget. And I believe we'll also ask if we can to see if we can secure maybe some help from some of our local businesses to look for a service study to see if we can get the project off the ground. But again, this relates to the whole Telegraph Road train station and the issues there being whether we can get a stop for the Amtrak Hyo Office service. And in that regard, as it relates to obviously safety and future prospects for economic development. So we'll keep you up to date in those matters as we get more information as we go forward. That concludes my comments. Next item is comments
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. To pick up on where Mayor Cowie left off, this is, as you know, the last council meeting, it was reported that Metra is going to remove the pedestrian crossing that was immediately outside of the doorway at the Telegraph Road Station. And this is what it looked like up until this past Sunday. Sunday, the crews from Metra came in. They took out the platform crossing and put in the fencing there. I think you have another one from the other angle. This is now looking east, showing where the original pedestrian platform was, and that has now subsequently been removed. I think the next one here is looking north with Conway Road up here. You can just sort of see the pedestrian crossing there. I think we have a close-up of that to we, Karina, there. That's the existing pedestrian crossing a little further north that it still does remain. So now all passengers must go north and cross over at this location. We did have a conversation following last council meeting about the width. I think it was Alderman Grumhaus brought up the question about the width of the platform on the east side. And Metra is going to be reviewing that and getting back to us on if it's a problem or if things need to be undertaken to make it wider and make it safer for the pedestrians. But this whole situation will also still be under review by the Transportation Safety Enhancement Committee that was put in place at the last council meeting as well. So I just wanted to let you know that they got in there very quickly. They did remove that. And we still have, you'll see that there's going to have to be some work done because you still have on the south side. Can you go back just a couple? You notice that there's still these depressed areas in here. And so we're going to have to come back and do something more permanent in those areas somewhere in the near future.
Bob, can you go back or go up one?
Go up.
Remember I had mentioned at the last meeting about the taxis all lining up? Now that all that traffic is going to be pushed to go out, we're going to have to do something about the taxi traffic because there's no way to get past if their cars lined up to pick up people plus the taxis.
Yep, you're absolutely right. And following your comments at the last meeting, the staff did have some preliminary conversations about putting them on the south side of the building down there. So there's a couple of things I think we'll be looking at closely now and tweaking the whole arrangement and layout there at the Telegraph Road Station.
You might want to put a sign too where the old ones were with an arrow pointing down across the tracks down the way. Somebody new comes running up to the train because your walkway's right through. I mean, it was designed to cross there.
Yep.
And they could suddenly feel lost. How do I get to the other side?
Yep, no, absolutely. It's a good idea. Yeah, there will be a learning curve for letting people get reorganized. Yep.
Actually, you could probably put a sign on the fence.
That's what I'm saying, on both sides of the fence with an arrow.
Pedestrian crossing.
Track crossing, yeah.
Yeah.
Further up.
Good point.
How many calls today?
I don't think we got one, did we?
I think it was a phone call.
One phone call. A positive one?
Yeah.
Love the new.
Love the new crossing. That's right.
I was late for the train. I had to vault the fence.
Probably somebody that missed their train because of the change. But we'll continue to work various aspects of this. And as the mayor said, we'll continue to work on the study too and bring that back to the council at a future meeting. Can you flip over, Karina? The second item quickly I just wanted to report on is that, as it was reported last month as well, on Thursday, February 4th, no, it's searching. There it is. On this coming Thursday, from 5:30 to 7:30, we do have the open house, soon as we can get it right side. There we go. For Stage Two Western Avenue improvements, we have sent a letter out to all the affected businesses, number of other interested parties who participated in the past, and just letting them know that they can come in, see the plans, learn more about the scheduling of when the work is going to be done. And as the council knows, this year, we're going to do it differently and do it block by block rather than do the whole east side, the whole west side. And hopefully that that will be less disruptive for the community as well.
With that, Bob, I just want to comment so that people at home or if anybody's watching this to know that it's not a presentation from 5:30 to 7:30. It's an open house. And so you can come at any time and look at the plans and ask questions. So it's not like you have to come or if you're at 6 o'clock, you've missed the first half hour. That's not the case. It's just an open house.
Excellent point. Yeah, we don't want to scare people to think they have to listen to Ken and Ramesh for two hours.
That's right, a two-hour presentation.
At a public open house. So, very good point. Thank you for clarifying that. Also in front of you, staff has updated the winter operations report. You'll see that, knock on wood, things to date are going very well. Overtime's down. We haven't had many snow operations. We have had to put down salt at various times. But fortunately, we started the season with a fair amount that we were able to buy because of the new storage facility that's there. And we're still currently have 1,600 tons of salt that are available to us. Plus, we have another 400 if we wanted to buy it. And I think what we're going to have to talk about probably sometime end of February, early March, is whether or not, and I'll probably look to some of the speculators on the council, as to whether or not we think salt prices are better this year than next year, and whether we want to buy the 400 to 600 additional tons that we can get this year because we can certainly hold them on site, or whether we think the price is going to go down next year and just take our minimum amount this year and roll the dice and see if prices are going to be less expensive next year. So just something to think about between now and probably the first meeting of March. We'll have to make that decision if we want to do that or not.
Did we come up with a new group of buying that we talked about last year versus the state and some of the local communities? We're going to get together and do that in the spring?
We are. The number of North Shore communities, Lake County North Shore communities are going to be meeting this summer. We're talking about putting out bids in late spring, early summer, with the idea of possibly even taking shipments in the summer, which we hope would bring price down. But then also, at the same time, putting in some information with the state bid process, but then doing them simultaneously so we can decide if we can get a better price than what we think the state's going to get, then we'll go that way.
One thing that would be helpful before we make the decision on whether to buy or not buy is whether we do think a summer discount is something that we can get. So even if we're unclear whether we're going to go into the consortium or not, it would be interesting to talk, reach out to some of our contacts and ask them if we were willing to take it in the summer, whether we would get a discount because that might influence whether we decide to buy it now or wait.
Absolutely. Yep. Well, and the other question I've got too is just whether the additional salt that we are entitled to purchase, whether we can purchase it at a lower rate than the original allotment. Over the weekend, I happened to be driving down south across the skyway where the big pile of salt is. It comes up the river. And I'll tell you what, the pile's still very big. So there's a considerable supply, and they might be interested to deal to try and lower their salt supplies that they currently have on hand. So, but we'll look at a number of options before we bring it back to the council.
And speaking of that, Bob, in terms of our new facility, we have plenty of room in terms of the storage?
We do. Yep.
We're long salt storage.
That was Alderman Grumhaus's addition.
Right. Well, it was wonderfully planned because you knew as soon as we built the large structure that we then wouldn't be able to use it all. But it's great. Staff really appreciates it and really having the flexibility so you don't have those semis rolling in every week refilling us has been extremely helpful.
I am on the record very clearly that we would never be short of salt storage.
I realize that. If anybody has not seen, you've got to go take a look at it. It's a large building.
The final thing I wanted to mention, and I know some of you may have read about it in the Lake Forest or over the weekend, is on the 21st of January, the village administrator in Lake Bluff, Drew Irvin and I, did our annual dog and pony show before the Chamber of Commerce. And usually Alderman Louie's there. This year, he didn't make it.
He's in Naples.
Yeah, Naples.
It's turf inspection.
Turf inspection. That was a little nicer than it. We had a bad, I think, icy day that day as usual. But we made a presentation. And as we told the group this year, this was our first, what we called tough love talk to the Chamber of Commerce. Usually when we speak to them, we give them an idea of what the capital projects are going to be in the upcoming year. But as Drew Irvin said, there aren't a lot of capital projects out there for us to talk about. But we did want to talk about trends and what was really going, what we saw going forward in the two communities and some of the challenges that the businesses were going to have. And we stole the name, I think, from the mayor when he was talking to some people, Partnering for Prosperity. And a new terminology, and you're going to hear more about this during the upcoming budget year, certainly is the whole new normal. We began by first just talking about some of the accomplishments in 2009. And we did have a number of things that occurred that were very positive. First, the completion of the Phase One, Phase One Western Avenue, the establishment of CBD advocacy group, Fresh Markets. If you haven't been down there, the demolition has started and work is underway. And they're moving very quickly. Caputos has opened very successfully into the community, as well as a number of other capital improvements that were underway in 2009. Also, as we emphasized, starting probably in 2007, 2008, the city really has been focused on its finances and knowing that these difficult times that we currently are experiencing were on the horizon, and we began preparing for them. Just very quickly, this is the major revenue sources for Lake Bluff. And you'll notice with respect to both sales tax and building permits, they really started to take a decline after 2008 into 2009. If you go to the next slide, the Lake Forest sales tax numbers, we have a few more zeros after our total sales tax. But we've been relatively flat. We haven't been hit quite as hard in the downturn as they have. But I think that's also a reflection that we're not as dependent on one industry, being the car industry, as Lake Bluff is. We're a little more diversified. And the types of sales tax revenue-producing businesses that we have that tend to generate the majority of our sales tax are grocery stores, the Walgreens, CVS, restaurants. And they tend to be a little more insulated from the recession than some of the other businesses that affected Lake Bluff's numbers. Some of you, I think, saw this in the January 18th edition of the Crane Chicago Business. And we talked about not only do we have challenges locally, but certainly we can't look to the state to give us any assistance. And in fact, the state may be a further drain on us as we go forward into 2010. I think the, as the article pointed out, that if the state of Illinois was a corporation, it would legally be in a position of bankruptcy right now because of where it stands financially. But their projections, as you can see, into 2010, as they're expecting sales tax will continue to decline, income tax will continue to decline, as well as some of their other revenue sources. And at least last I heard, they do have a $12 billion shortfall in their budget in 2010 that they have to address somehow since they are legally required to have a balanced budget. Looking further at the challenges ahead, some of the things that we've gotten from Michael Hanlon, who's chairman of our CBD Task Force and others, is sort of the tsunami that has affected residential real estate over the course of the last couple of years is going to be hitting the commercial real estate markets in the next couple of years because a number of their loans are going to be coming due. And as the information points out here, they're currently, the distressed properties on the retail side have reached $37 billion nationally. In the Chicago area alone, it's $1.8 billion. That 400 of the 2,000 largest malls have already closed in the past two years. And more will continue to close over the next couple of years as some of these loans are up for renewal. The other thing that I think everybody is pointing out is that consumer changes will outlive the recession. Even as we start to pull back out of the recession, that people's buying habits will be different going forward in the future. And that will be a challenge because, and it's a new term that I learned as we were researching for this, inscrutable consumers. That's a consumer that basically you can't pin down. Sort of like a teenager, you know, you can't pin them down. But that's really what consumers are going to be like too because they certainly are going to be looking for value. But also, they're not going to be easy to predict. And you're going to really need to, there's going to be, I think, an emphasis on really trying to understand who your customer is. Current conditions, just to give you a quick overview in both the Lake Forest and Lake Bluff CBDs, we have a total of 196 businesses in our CBD with Lake Bluff 45. Approximately 40% or 78 of those businesses are retail. And 118 or 60% is non-retail, which you can see our balance is a little more, well, we have a little more balance than the Lake Bluff CBD, which tends to be a little heavier weighted towards the non-retail use. Currently where we stand, and this was as of mid-January, that we had in our central business district about 31,000 square feet of vacant retail space. That represents about 5.7% of the total retail space that we have. In Lake Bluff, they're at 2.9%, which if you look nationally, Lake Bluff is doing very well. They're about half of what the national vacancy rate is, we're a percentage point below. But then if you drill down further, you just take a look at the Chicago retail vacancy and the Chicago suburb vacancy, while we certainly have a couple of high-profile vacancies, overall the percentages are much more positive than what many of our neighboring communities are experiencing. This is, I think, a very interesting chart for two reasons. One, it gives you sort of a quick sap shot of how we are competing with some of our neighboring communities and some of our other trade areas, but also some of the challenges that lie ahead as well. And this is now the square footage numbers up here on rental rates or lease rates. Those are based on what was published available in mid-January for both Lake Forest, Lake Bluff, and all these other communities. So it doesn't mean that you can necessarily go out and get Market Square for that rate because if it wasn't available, then it wasn't part of this. And I'm sure that there are other rental rates that are higher or lower. But this is just a snapshot of what was available in Lake Forest or Lake Bluff and so forth at this point in time. So as you can see though, generally, you know, we tend to be higher than most with the exception of downtown Evanston, Winnetka, and certainly, you know, Michigan Avenue. But when you compare us to our immediate competitors, Lake Bluff, Highland Park, Vernon Hills, we're, you know, a good $7, $6 more a square foot than those adjoining communities. Then when you compound that with the fact that there's roughly about 14,000 daily visitors, if you will, to our central business district compared to 25 in Highland Park, 40 in Vernon Hills, and so forth, that it means that, you know, we're not getting as many bodies in the stores, many transactions that may be occurring as in some of these other places. And so it makes it increasingly difficult for these businesses to compete. And then when you keep in mind the fact that half of our trade area is Lake Michigan, that it really reduces the total number of people who live within a one-mile trade area or one-mile radius of the City of Lake Forest CBD District. Taking that one step further, I think, go to the next slide. Well, let me step back. One of the things that I really emphasized to the chamber when we met with them too is, and actually, this joke didn't go over very well because Alderman Louie wasn't there for me to pick on, but I can do it here tonight now. When you go back and you think when Alderman Louie was a boy here, everybody shopped in Lake Forest and/or Lake Bluff because there was no other option unless you got on the train with your family and you went downtown. But basically, you did everything here. You bought your groceries here. You bought everything here because you really had to.
The horses didn't go that far.
The horses didn't go far. That's right. I should have used that line. But then, obviously, over a period of time, in the 50s and 60s, you could then go to Highland Park. You could, you know, go down to Evanston. You could either take the train or drive. And so the market area started to stretch both north and south, but also east and west. And by, I think it was the mid-'70s is when Hawthorne opened up. And so you had all that competition to the west. And so the trade area became much larger. And then, you know, into the '70s and '80s with the Chicago metropolitan region, you could even go to Oak Brook. You could go to a number of other areas and have a shopping experience different than certainly the Lake Forest or the North Shore experience. But I think what's been most profound is the internet trade area, which is now we're not just looking at Chicago metropolitan. We're not looking at even Illinois for that matter because of the extent of where that trade area has gone. And let me just, I don't know if I brought it up here with me. Bear with me one second because there was some fascinating information that I read to the group. This is out of, on January 20th, it was talking about internet sales during the holiday season. And they said for 2009 holiday season, overall sales rose 1.1%, which is pretty good. I mean, when you think about where we are in a recession and so forth. However, online sales rose 15.5%. And they represented a total of 5% of all sales that occurred over the holiday season. So that means that bricks and mortar retail sales inched up just 0.3%. So really, the impact in terms of the effect that it has on merchants, really, it was on the internet sales portion of it. And they go on to say that by 2013, internet sales will have grown to be more than $189 billion, representing almost a 10% annual compounded growth rate since 2009. And I asked for a show of hands, and I think it was unanimous that I asked every business in there who would like to have roughly a 10% annual growth rate in their sales over the next five years. And I think that's, you know, it just gives you an idea of the tremendous competition that's out there. And then further, talking about, or talking with Sue Boucher, who is in attendance, amazon.com, for example, even in this recession, the company is expected to post a 34% increase in sales. And over the next five years, analysts beg the company to grow 26% annually. And so when you take a look at some of those numbers, they're scary, quite frankly, if you are a bricks and mortar-only retail out there. And so that's what they have to keep in mind is that they're not just fighting with Vernon Hills or Lake Bluff or Highland Park. They have to be competing globally if they want to stay in business. The next, going back to the information about rents, this is sort of some of the difficulty that the CBD advocacy group identified and we've talked about here. First off, rent should be no more than roughly 10% of your sales. And so if you have a thousand-square-foot business and you're paying $30.75 a square foot, you have to generate sales of roughly $30,750 just to pay for your rent. Well, if you are selling $5 cups of coffee, you relatively have to do 166 transactions per day just to be able to pay your rent. And so as you can see, that's some of the difficulty that some of the retail businesses are having trying to keep their head above water as they're both paying these rates and also dealing with declining sales. Let me pause here for one moment because I should. I'm sure she's at home watching. So I want to make sure I put in a plug for Susan Kelsey, our economic development coordinator, really is the one who pulled all of this information together and deserves a lot of credit for what she's been trying to accomplish because she has been out there making cold calls, calling people. But some of these statistics that you have seen, these businesses have. And that's part of the reason why some of them have said, "Lake Forest, you're wonderful, however, not interested." Or, "Not interested at this time. Call us back in six months or a year." And so the challenge that we have for businesses that are currently here or any new business coming in are the following. And these came out of Price Waterhouse retailing for 2015. And they said that successful businesses will have to create a shopping experience. There's going to have to be something that's a draw there to bring people to downtown Lake Forest versus Vernon Hills or Highland Park or whatever the case might be. Certainly some of the things that we have been trying to do is developing these unique customer experiences. Like in Lake Bluff, they had It's a Wonderful Life in their downtown CBD area over Christmas. We had Follow Santa, which was very popular and successful. The reindeer was a real big hit. And there's a group right now meeting, the Project 2010 group, which is trying to come up with some of these unique customer experiences that are very different, but that that are very different, but that will hopefully be an attraction to bring people in. And I know right now, they're, they're doing some planning for Mother's Day 2010. The second item is, they have to gather shopper data. And this goes back to my point about being, the shoppers, the consumers, are going to be inscrutable, they're going to be hard to pin down. And it's really hard to pin down when you don't know anything about your shoppers. And surprisingly, 50% of our businesses don't even collect data about who, what the zip codes are, who their customers are. And so they really need to get more active in trying to develop that information, whether it's through zip codes, whether it's through emails, whatever the case might be. I gave them the example of my, my 18-year-old daughter, probably like every 18-year-old girl at the high school, is on a mailing list, or actually, an email Twitter, I don't know what the technical term is, for a business in Highland Park that sells jeans. East Street, I think is the name of it. And when they have a sale, they press a button, and 200 girls between probably the ages of 12 and 21 get this email that says, "This is on sale." They know who their target audience is, they know how to effectively market to that target audience. And so that is how they're, they're promoting their business, without having to go through the, the traditional methods. Apparently, we must've hit a nerve at the meeting on the 21st, because Susan Kelsey and Joanna Rollick did have a workshop that they put on, on how to use the social media to promote your business. And there were 34 businesses that were represented at this meeting on the 26th. Prior to our talk, there were generally about five to seven who were showing up. So hopefully, we, we were able to make some inroads and really push people to start to pay attention to this, surviving in the new normal. And then finally, responding to the changing demographics and trends. Again, trying to understand who your, your customers are, and more importantly, where your customers are coming from. And making sure that they're relevant and flexible, and that they're using all the tools and technologies that are there to both listen and to promote themselves to consumers who are out there. So this was the, the talk that we gave. At least, the initial feedback that people were able to give me to my face. They really appreciated the facts. They really appreciated the directness of the presentation. I don't know what they said afterwards about Drew and I. But really, the, the important thing here, the message we were trying to make is that they cannot continue to just hang out a shingle and say, "I'm in Lake Forest, and I will make a living here in a business in Lake Forest." That won't continue. And there was also an interesting article in the Cranes the same week. And they were talking about upscale businesses, retail businesses in Chicago. And the fact that they have, they too are adjusting to this new consumer. And they know they have to adjust to the new consumer, or they will be out of business as well. So I know that you, you got a copy of the packet, but I wanted to go through it with you, so you could get more of a flavor of the kind of tone and questions that were, or the answers and questions that were being presented at that meeting. So with that, I'm done filling. I know we have a short agenda, but if you go through, I'll be happy to answer any question on any of those subjects.
Bob, was, was the group generally surprised when they saw those rent levels? In comparison with the other towns? Because basically, I, the average is kind of low in the, in the prime shopping area where you're going to get people coming by. They're considerably higher than what you were showing on the screen.
Yes and no. And that was sort of the, some of the feedback we got was that those, those prices, some people wish they had right now. I will say that a couple of the businesses, I'm sorry, a couple of the property owners came up to me and said, "There is some rollback going on in rental prices." Because they recognize that they have to be much more competitive to try and get people within their stores, or within their vacant spaces. But I think it was helpful to put it in the context for a number of people, because you hear sort of the Michigan Avenue number, you know, "We're as high as, as Michigan Avenue in some cases." But also to get a feel as to what Highland Park, Vernon Hills, and some of the other ones are.
Well, that's what I'm saying, and they're considerably less than the average. That's surprising.
Yeah, that's right.
It's a good report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Our next item on the agenda this evening is comments by council members. We've had some issues in the fourth ward about coyote infestation. I spoke to Mr. Kylie about it. Bob, do you want to just kind of give a thumbnail of, of what you told me?
Thank you, Alderman Palmer. We, and I don't know if it's the time of year or what, but we have gotten a few more calls recently about attacks of coyotes, primarily on family dogs or other pets. Fortunately, or unfortunately, I guess, depending on how you look at it, coyotes are a protected species. Residents are not able, under Lake Forest law, to discharge weapons in the community, so they cannot take matters into their own hands. But there are businesses that are out there that will trap them and relocate them. If you want, you can call the police department and get information from the police department on companies that are, that are in a position that they can do that. But we ask that residents don't take matters into their own hands, because they are not able to fire a weapon in the corporate limits of the City of Lake Forest. And more importantly is that the State of Illinois will not let them, if they find out, shoot coyotes as well, because they are a protected species.
Any other comments by council members? No? We'll move on to the next item on the agenda this evening is council committee reports.
There was a meeting of the legal committee last week. And really, the only thing the committee went over is the social hosting ordinance, which is going to be presented to the council at its next meeting. And the, the combined legal talents of the committee went over the ordinance in detail and made a lot of very, very good comments, tightening up the language and improving it. That's it.
Any other council reports? No? We'll move on to the next item on the agenda this evening is the opportunity for public to address the city council on non-agenda items. Do we have anybody from the public that wishes to speak? No, hearing none, we'll move on. Our next item on the agenda is consent agenda. We have four items on the consent agenda this evening. I'll read the four items, and then we can either have discussion or approval as you wish. First item is approval of the minutes from the January 19, 2010 regular meeting. The second item is approval of authorized invoices and payrolls. The third item is authorization of treasurer's warrants to meet expenses of February 2010. And the fourth item is consideration of a resolution appropriating MFT funds for the 2010 street resurfacing program. Motion to approve. Second. This is a roll call vote.
Alderman Grumman.
Aye.
Alderman Novick.
Aye.
Alderman Quinman.
Aye.
Alderman Voltrac.
Aye.
Alderman Morse.
Aye.
Alderman Hammerham.
Aye.
Alderman Luby.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Thank you, Beth. That takes care of the consent agenda. The next item on the agenda this evening is ordinances. The first one is an ordinance amending Chapter 9 of the City Code regarding high-impact traffic permits. This is a first reading, presented by city engineer Ken Magnus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. We discussed this topic at the committee home meeting last month, as well as the Public Works meeting. And it involves high-intensity truck usage associated with large-scale construction projects. Examples are subdivisions or ravine bluff stabilization projects. And what we're trying to do is recover the loss and value of the roadway caused by this activity. You might remember the deterioration curve. With the increased activity of the trucking, of the trucks, that curve is shortened, and that incremental change is what we're trying to recoup. The fee would be assessed by the engineering section. There's eight variables. The first four are traffic-related, and the bottom four are pavement-related. And that's how the fee is figured. And for cranes, we get a call maybe once a month on those. We ran the calculations on cranes for different sizes and locations in the city, and the average was about $100. So we're recommending that just, the fee would be $100 per trip for cranes. Projects that would be exempt would be city-sponsored projects, single-family residential construction, and local deliveries. Appeals would be made to the city manager first, then the city council second. And be administered through the engineering section and enforced by the police department. And we contacted 20 other communities. None of them had anything like this ordinance. The two did respond and said they had overweight ordinance, and the other one was just a case-by-case basis. So this is relatively new, and it's targeting high-intense truck usage. Do you have any questions? This is the first reading.
Yeah, just curiosity on the exemptions for the single-family residence construction. Wouldn't it be better to examine that more or less on a case-by-case basis? Again, depending on scope. A lot of the projects can get rather involved, and again, I think it, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point. We were considering that, or we thought we'd just start with the larger-scale projects. We were going to discuss a little more of that internally. If anything, it would be just a set fee for residential, I guess, reconstruction, and then renovation would be another fee. But right now, what we really want to address is the large-scale projects.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Ken?
What are we thinking, five projects a year, three projects a year?
We have two ravine bluff projects coming forward, and we have the subdivision vineyard, so about three right now, that we see in the next few months.
But the subdivision vineyard, we really can't do, right? Because it's off of 60, and that's not our road?
Oh, 60 wouldn't count, but they would be accessing the site on Ridge Road. And they're, they have work to do on Ridge Road, bringing some of the utilities in.
They have to move the barn down Ridge Road, too.
Right.
Most of these, don't most of these type of fee things go through community development?
This type?
No, I mean, I don't know.
No, this is, this is relatively new.
No, I know, I know this is new. I'm just saying, the bulk of the fees that we assess for development or construction-related activities, don't they go through community?
Through, through community development and engineering as well. We have the water should development ordinance, steep slope ordinance, and grading ordinance.
I guess my fear on this is that we're going to get in a situation where we're, we leave ourselves vulnerable, because we're not going to be able to apply this in a consistent way. I mean, if someone wants to build a new restaurant downtown, are we going to assess this? You know, if someone's doing ravine restoration that we think needs to be done, you know, are we going to assess this?
Depends on the roads they drive, isn't that it? With the weight limit on the roads that they drive, the trucks on.
That's part of it, but it's really the number of truck trips that would, that would really trigger this. If it's, if it's just a, a few deliveries, we're not going to push this. But what we've seen on past projects, especially ravine and bluff stabilization projects, there's a lot of trucking activity associated with that and subdivisions. That's why we wanted to just stop at, at that point.
But then are we going to discourage those types of projects when we need those projects to be done?
Well, I don't think this is going to be a huge revenue generator compared to the work that has to be done. This is a minor amount of money.
All right. I'm not, I'm not completely, I'm not completely sold on it, I guess, is my...
It's just like a law to have a law. I mean, to me, it's just, it's like one more thing to make it difficult to, to work in Lake Forest.
We don't, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is clearly a policy decision. The staff annually tries to bring forward to you different potential revenue sources that you can look at to help offset your, both your capital and your operational costs. We frequently, as, as Ken mentioned, will get phone calls, not from the person doing the project, but from neighbors of the person doing the project, saying, "Look at all the damage that's being done to these side streets. Is the city charging them anything right now?" And our answer right now is, "No, we're not." And so it's one of those things, sort of, you're damned if you do and damned if you don't situations, because clearly, the city engineer working with the city attorney have devised a system, not where it's going to generate lots of money, not where it's going to become onerous or overly burdensome for the individual doing the work. But at least, we can point to the neighbors and other people who live in the vicinity and say that they are contributing towards rehabilitating these roads, that their unusual construction activity is causing onto this area. And this isn't just a full cost that's being passed on to all the other taxpayers of Lake Forest for the project that they're doing. So that was our intent. Clearly, if, if the council feels as though this is overly burdensome, it's sending the wrong message to residents that we want to fix up properties and so on and so forth, then we can put it on the shelf and we can have it there if, for some reason in the future, we want to pull it off the shelf. But that was the whole purpose, or impetus behind bringing this forward to the city council.
I just want to comment from Public Works. One of our big discussions is, and from the people that call us, "How come the road didn't last very long? And the edges are broken off, and the corners are bad?" And it usually is related to heavy traffic on that road that you wouldn't normally have, whether it's a subdivision project or a ravine where they're driving the big trucks down. And then, of course, we see the roads, the asphalt breaks down and it's rutted. And we've always been short on our funds to redo the roads. That was the idea behind it. And this at least, again, as Bob just said, it's putting money back into the coffers to increase the amount for capital improvements to keep those things fixed. So that was the idea behind it. But it does break them down pretty quick when you get a lot of those big trucks running over.
You know, if we have a big ravine project, what do we think this generates in revenues? 50 grand?
Oh, no. Depending on the location, it'd be $3,000 to $5,000.
And Ken, what will the total restoration project cost?
Uh, ravine and bluff, they could, they could run into hundreds of thousands of dollars. Easy.
I, I, you know, I guess my reaction is if we're going to do it, we ought to really do it. I mean, we're only going to do three or four of these projects a year. That's $20,000. Okay, we're approving, we just approved a road fund for $1.25 million. Okay? This doesn't move the needle.
No, but it patches the broken road.
It, it doesn't. It barely does.
It barely does.
But we also have to be careful, and maybe I'll let Vic talk about this, is there has to be that nexus between the real damage they're causing and how much we're charging them as well.
I was going to go there, too.
I'm glad you...
No, I, I think that Bob's point is, is right on target. In fact, Ken and the engineering department have actually developed a more strict formula than just the criteria. The ordinance is set forth with a criteria in part because there may be some moving parts. And rather than having that set out in such detail in the ordinance, we thought it best that that be done by regulation, so that it could be adjusted appropriately and timely. The ability to, you know, I think, I think that one of the important things to note is, if a construction project is only going to have an impact that it might affect a road by 2% or 3%, you may think that's not a lot. You have several of those, and now you've got, you've lost 10%, 15%, 20% of your expected life on the road. If we don't have some means of making that up, then we're not going to be finding that our development permits are really covering the expenses that, that they're incurring. And this was not intended to fund a brand-new road, but rather to make up that difference between expectations and reality when we have these ongoing projects. One thing to further note is if there is specific damage that can be attributable to a, say, a truck using our... a, say, a truck using our roads, if they go over a curve and crush it and we are able to pin that on them, they will be individually responsible for that specific damage. This is really intended to cover the incremental loss of longevity in our roads rather than cover a particular instance of damage. Although, as a matter of practicality, we don't have eyes everywhere to, to catch the specific instances of damage. So in some respects, it is a hedge against that as well.
I, I think we should just go ahead and do this. I don't see much difference between this and the conversation we had about direct fees for people who are using the sports fields and so on, because there are costs and losses attributable to people using those fields and we were talking about having additional charges for that. And I don't see this as being very much different. I don't think the sports field approach was intended to generate revenues where we could suddenly buy a new piece of property and have an entirely new park. It's just to help to pay for some of the things around the edges, so to speak. I, no doubt, this is a new project, a new, a new approach, and it will take a year or two or so to see if it's the best that it can be right now or whether we need to flex it a little bit one way or the other. But I just think we should go ahead and do it because we are, we have been looking for all kinds of ways to try to bring in a few more dollars.
I, I'm all right trying it. Before we do final approval, I'd like to see a calculation on a, on a project, just to make sure I understand the, the math and making sure that we're not getting too arbitrary on it. But, I mean, we can certainly try it and if we run into problems with it, I, I just don't want the cost to administer it, administer it and, and do appeals and everything like that to outweigh the value of it.
Will we have a, will we have a copy of an ordinance, too, to look at?
The ordinance is...
Is it in here? Did I miss it? I looked it up.
Oh, there is one. We just wanted to...
I need it. You put it out of order for me so I can find it.
Yeah, I would like to email it about it rather than...
Oh, okay. Great.
I'll make a motion to approve first reading, though.
Second.
Hold on, favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Our next item on the agenda this evening is new business and our first item and actually now our only item on that.
Okay. Yeah, I know. I think somebody did something in the back room there.
The stadium mic.
You know, let me borrow that one.
Get that guitar out, Bob.
See if that, is that one better?
No, it's not on.
No, no.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I guess that's a good lead in for the next item on the agenda, which is really something that informally has been occurring for as long as I can remember in the city of Lake Forest. But in light of some of the more recent agreements that we've had, we felt that we had, we needed to add some formal structure to the way in which the agencies or the organizations of the city, school district sixty-seven and one fifteen, interact and, and really share services. The city, I think most residents know, is really, I think, blessed with a very close working relationship between the city and the school districts. In talking with some of my colleagues in amendment, many other communities and in some communities where they have multiple school districts, there's little or no cooperation between the entities and therefore the residents in the long run don't benefit by the level of cooperation that we certainly have here in the city of Lake Forest. I think the council is aware of numerous recent examples that we've had where the city and school districts have participated, whether it's use of classrooms out at Elawa Farms, whether it's the fiber optics property or project, and also a number of longstanding relationships we have between the Lake Forest Park and Recreation Department and both schools of sixty-seven and one fifteen. Last spring, when Merrick Howey came into office, we had a meeting with Merrick Howey and the presidents of sixty-seven and one fifteen, and there was a feeling that we needed to establish, if you will, an umbrella organization, which is really laid out in this facility's use agreement. And then, as we need, we will develop separate independent sub-agreements, if you will, that may be more specific to a particular use, whether that's rental of Elawa Farms, whether it's rental of LFTV, whether it's fiber optics, and also, I believe it's attached to your packet, is a number of potential sharing of services that were identified in the last year or two by staff. And that includes maybe payroll services, food services, printing services. We've already done some recent training, joint training between the districts and the city and so on and so forth. So I think, you know, I don't want to say that the potential is, is endless, but certainly there's a number of things that the entities can do. And I think in light of the current economy and the need for all governmental agencies to try and do an awful lot more with very few resources, that there's some real pressures and maybe the time has come to really move this to the forefront and make sure that the entities know first and foremost that they're there to cooperate, they're there to work together, that redundant facilities, redundant services doesn't do anybody any good, and we need to get past territorial or turf issues and recognize that the real winner in all of this is the taxpayers of Lake Forest if we can provide, continue to provide a high level of service with fewer and fewer dollars. I'd be happy to go over the agreement if there's any specific question you have, but basically, the agreement lays out the use of the facilities, talks about how we will charge back for use of facilities, the indemnity period, how we will come together and schedule. And, and I think that's one of the other nice things in this day and age, too, is that there's some really nice software packages that can be jointly used by the agencies so we know exactly which facilities are available, which facilities are already booked, and, and hopefully add for better coordination and better utilization of the assets that we currently have in our community.
Bob, I do have a couple of questions and being las on between the rec and the schools, I've been involved in some fights and tried to help out. How are we doing in terms of priority? I know that when we were on the Parks and Rec, there were some times where the schools would take a paying group over, let's say, a park and rec program. And I, I mean, I see both sides of it. Are we spelling that out a little bit better in terms of priority of, I know there was a couple mentioned here, but I, I remember Joe Mobile had a really detailed, you know, list of, you know, the, the users.
Right. Well, if you turn to page four where it talks about the programming priorities, it does, in Alderman, Hanrahan, you're absolutely right, and that's one of the other main reasons, I guess, that, that led to the development of this more formal document, is that there seemed to be a lack of some communication and coordination. One side thought something was said, the other side didn't hear it or thought something differently. The way that this is structured in the new software package we're talking about is that if Parks and Rec were to use a facility or, say, the climbing wall and they have it booked and then they put it in their brochure, they would lock that out for the time that is being used by Parks and Rec. Now Parks and Rec would then have to compensate them for the time that they're using it. And so we have to be very diligent in saying, yes, we're running this program and yes, these are the times. But you won't have the problem that we had experienced in past years, which is we think we're operating a program and then we find out the facilities aren't there and at the last minute, we're trying to juggle groups around to different fields or whatever the case might be. So this, this will address that issue.
The other thing is, is that I had, is, how long is this agreement? Is it an annual agreement?
It is. I think we set it up so that basically it just continues...
Just continues? What, what, and I don't know if this will ever happen, if, if Lake Bluff decides to share services with the, the school district in sixty-seven, how would that play in, especially with them cutting back on Croy and some things like that? I'm a little worried about that, so I, I want to make sure if they do decide sharing services with this, that we can have some, some more say in it again, that it's not just, you know, I would assume we'd have to rewrite this if they came in.
No, and it's an excellent question and I, for purposes of full disclosure, I should say that one of the reasons that this has been kicked around for so long is when we first started, we brought in most of, I think, all of the educational governmental institutions in Lake Forest, Lake Bluff and said, "Do you want to participate in this?" We had a number of meetings and that list of potential services was really a brainstorm of probably ten organizations in Lake Forest, Lake Bluff. The long and short of it is, is that really the three communities that are a part of this are the only ones that were really willing to move this forward now. And that is not to say that we are being exclusive, quite the contrary, that we felt as though we'll get something in place and that if other entities want to participate, they want to join us, we will welcome them under the same terms and conditions that are here.
Thank you.
Bob, I have a question about the governance aspect of this consortium. I understand that underneath all this is, is the foundation of trust that has been developed over many, many years. But on page three under governance, it talks about a board of directors determining the policies and activities and talks about the makeup of the board. And then later on, on page seven, it talks about amendments to the agreements requires three quarters vote of the board. Is the board going to be constituted such that because there are two school districts and only one city involved in this, that the control of the board is going to be by the schools even though the city may be owning, own some of the properties that are going to be an issue?
Technically, I guess that could happen because right now it will be the president of the school, the two school boards and the mayor that will be the governance body. I think if that was to happen and it clearly wasn't fair and equitable, there are the, the withdrawal provisions that are spelled out in here and the city could pull back and say, "You know what? If that's the direction you want to go, then we're not going to be a party to this agreement." I think to echo your initial comments, I think there is a certain fairness doctrine that we're all assuming going into this and recognizing that, again, it's not a, an attempt to take over somebody else's facilities, but to utilize those facilities for the best interest of the residents at large.
I would just comment to follow up on that, that at the meeting, all parties were, really came to the table with a very open-minded and clear direction of what we're trying to accomplish and there was really no, no issues, I would say, as far as how we're going to do it. In fact, I think the conversation really led to, you know, this is, this is a good beginning to kind of revitalize this agreement and to look at, especially during these economic times, how we can speak openly, more freely and talk about how we can share resources. So I understand your point. I think, though, right now, certainly with the folks that we met with, with Sharon Golan and Julie Ward, Julie Wolf and Harry Griffith and the city itself, that everyone is on like mind and unless that, or if something really were to change, I'd say that I would, I would be concerned, but that's not, certainly not the case now.
Well, they'll need a three quarters vote and we'll still have a block because we'll have a third of a vote, right?
Well, we'll have, we'll have the mayor and myself.
We'll have two of six, right?
Two of six, right.
So they won't, can't get a three quarters unless...
Well, it's three quarters to amend the agreement. It sounds like it's probably a majority to determine the policies and activities and they would have a majority.
The, the one point I would note is that this agreement is really more of a, a baseline for actually entering into agreements. This doesn't affect any agreement in and of itself. And certainly when any individual cost sharing, for example, approach were to be considered, there would have to be an implementing agreement for that. And there is the opportunity at that point, if something is out of whack for that particular use, that it would be separately negotiated. But again, this was intended, as I, as I recall, to have everybody started at a certain baseline when beginning this, instead of starting at, at square one for everything. Certainly, we have a number of examples that we've already gone through, but I think this became most apparent when we were talking about the, the fiber agreement, that, you know, we're working so much to get this thing done, let's have a baseline. And, and a lot of those same concepts are incorporated into this.
I even, I don't feel that, you know, my concern is something that would cause me to be negative about this whole thing, but I just wanted to put it out there.
I think the document is excellent. I'm always concerned about an evergreen document, though. I wonder if there's some merit in a sunset timeframe so that people are actually forced to focus on it once every X number of years. I'm not saying it should be every year, but maybe once every five years it comes up and people actually have to look at the document instead of just sort of letting it go on business as usual.
Especially because you have a new superintendent, possibly new school board presidents are voted in and out. I agree, that's a good point.
I don't think there would be a problem with that. Because I think the intention, and Merrick Howey might correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there was also an intention of reporting back at least annually to the governing boards in general, how are things going and maybe what are some of the new agreements that have been established over the course of the year. So I don't think that there would be a problem with that. We can add some language to that.
I would agree with you and Bob on that. I don't think there's any issue with putting a timetable on it or contract period, I think.
Yeah, I don't in any way mean to diminish the, the quality of the work that's been done on this and the focus. I think it's absolutely spot on, but I just, you know...
No, it's a, it's a good comment.
We need an approval now with that, with that on, that we'll add it.
Yep.
Because I'll move for the approval.
I'll second.
I have a, I have a question still. Can I finish my...
You certainly can. We have it still on the floor and it can be debated.
Yes. Oh, I thought you moved in second.
Yeah, so we're waiting for you.
Oh, okay.
We'll allow that.
I also think this is a great idea. I have a question about, it's not intended to replace any procurement related regulations that we have, is it, in any way? Those would all have to come back to council if there was any expenditures of money.
Yes.
Okay. I'm great.
Do we have a motion?
We have the motion.
We have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Grumhouse. Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Widman.
Aye.
Alderman Gultra.
Aye.
Alderman Morse.
Aye.
Alderman Hanrahan.
Aye.
Alderman Mubi.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Eight yeas, seven nays, a motion carries.
Thank you, Beth. That's our last item on the agenda. Any additional items for council discussion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
So moved, meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Beth. That's our last item on the agenda. Any additional items for council discussion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
So moved. Meeting is adjourned.